No information, but do you think maybe she's gonna zoom in?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Maybe.
Alright, okay, goodbye.
I emailed her.
Bye guys.
It's also possible to do it once after the fact and record your bits.
Yeah.
You got a recording of that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I thought you meant not to end it as well later.
They lied?
Yes.
It's a free application. This is November eighteenth, twenty twenty one. It's the Monmouth. Planning move from our regular Tuesday, second Tuesday because of the Veterans Day holiday to tonight. I'm Stephen O'Donnell, the chair. I'll call the meeting to order. We have missing tonight Rick Grant, who was an alternate. Got in touch with me to say he was ill, not with COVID, but doesn't feel very good. And we don't have John Davinsky here, but perhaps he'll show later. So we have Larry Sosier. Ray Simon, David Mills. Like see there, here. So we have the meeting minutes from last meeting. You have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, gonna be a couple of corrections.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
We can discuss them. Right in a second. Dave of our, I don't think Mike was here.
I wasn't here, so I'm gonna be up.
Okay. So you're safe, Mike?
Let me add a little second.
I'll second it then if no one else is going to.
I'm sorry, I thought Dave did.
Oh, Dave second, okay. Alright, do you have some corrections to offer?
Yeah, a couple. One is under the new business. That this line up from the bottom of the sheet. What's in the minutes is for the stormwater, they have submitted and received approval from DEP. I think the language on that probably should be something similar to they have submitted and received approval from main DEP for their stormwater management plan.
Okay, so you're, so with with strike for stormwater. Make the they a capital.
Correct.
And then add at the end for their warm water management plan. Please, okay.
Something that will come to cover if we go back to these minutes is the board will notify fire and police chief of application. Did you get any input from Kevin or Dan?
Not yet.
Probably won't, but we'll get into this when we get into the Kipewa. If you want.
So it probably should say fire and police chiefs overall, right?
Kevin was not aware, he wasn't contacted.
My understanding is that they get a copy of the notice in their slot at the town office.
I don't, I don't know if that, that part did not get relayed correctly.
Okay.
So they're not yet aware.
Alright.
But I also, we will get into it later to figure out where we're at in this process and clean that up.
Yeah, okay. Then the other change, I guess, would be the last paragraph on that page. Which is, as printed, additionally, the board discussed the availability of the meeting, their meeting information. That statement should read additionally, the board discussed the difficulty of obtaining their meeting information package.
Well, I guess you could say some members difficulty.
Okay. Yeah, because I think you heard from a good number of the board members what they thought about obtaining information.
Okay.
And I'd also like to thank Matthew for turning this thing around.
Just let's get to the next, that's my new next guy, then you can decide.
Anything else on the minutes?
No, okay. Well, that's it.
Okay. I should have said at the beginning, Dave is a voting member tonight. So a motion, a vote to approve these minutes with the recommended changes, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, four zero with Mike abstaining. Okay. So we have on their old business, the applications under site plan review and shoreline zoning by camp group doing business as Camp Kipewa. And I would just say we had a site visit two weeks ago, I think, fourth. And and we had, there were a couple of butters and neighbors present, I think there were three. And most members of the board were able to get there. And Matt, the code enforcement officer was there. And Norm Chamberlain and that's somebody else from camp group. So we had a walk through of the site.
Pardon the interruption, excuse me, you have people waiting that haven't been let in by the host.
Okay. We're short our recording secretary, so you'll have to bear with us tonight. Okay. Matt, it might be a good idea if you could make note of the people who are there remotely, who in mind. Okay. So since the last meeting, we did have a recent submission from Mr. Chamberlain, what we had asked at the last meeting was for some more information regarding existing traffic at the camp and how their new development might impact. That, so we'll have that posted to the website. Just to give a summary at this point, we're not, we're not tonight going through any review, we're just in terms of any substantive issues, we're just kind of seeing where we are as far as submissions. The next meeting in December will, will have a public hearing and likely after the public hearing, we would conduct a formal review of the project, but tonight's an opportunity again to share information. Discuss what, what we may need to obtain for additional information before the review. Give anybody an opportunity to, to make a comment. Norm, do you want to give any type of summary of this plan at this point?
Yeah, actually Bill's gonna do that tonight.
Okay.
Thanks, Norm. Hi Chair O'Donnell and Board members, Bill Walsh from Walsh Engineering, and yeah, if we could, just we'll give a brief presentation kind of on the, the traffic information that we submitted. I don't know if I can share my screen or not, I know we struggled with that last time.
Yeah, I, even in the setup of this Zoom meeting, I was not able to see how to do that. Nor can I share my screen even as the host, excuse me, so that's something we'll look into further with Zoom, however, all the board members do have a printed copy of the report as well as the proposed.
Okay. So, okay, yeah, I can talk through that in that, I think if we can, we can sort of look at it together, so. We did work closely with Steve and Ginger, and actually I'll introduce the people that are here, we have Steve and Ginger Claire, who are the directors, we've got Norm Chamberlain and Billy Hotch, all of the camp group team, if you will, that is, is working on this project. So we did send that email out today, actually, on the traffic, which gives kind of a summary of where kind of things are right today with the camp that exists, and then what happens with the new camp. The existing traffic on a, to the existing camp, the traffic is, is fairly minimal, there, most of the people are on, on premises that, that work there, there are about four people that go off campus or commute, if you will, to the site. So on a daily basis, the, the, the traffic is, is relatively minimal. They have things that, that obviously deliveries to the site, FedEx, sort of those normal service deliveries that, that happen, and those, those are just part of the functioning part of the, of the camp itself. The, the, the real, I guess, discussion points, probably the, the pickup and the drop off, so presently, what happens, and if you can look at that circulation plan that we submitted with this, shows some, shows what we call gate one, which is the, I'll say the existing entrance on the left side of the plan as you look at it. And the red arrows, which is Kipewa Drive, that comes into the, into the camp, probably the way most of you came in when you did the site visit. You enter that, that driveway, woods on either side of you, and then you come down to the camp proper. And once in that camp proper is where, as, as they have pick up and, and drop off days, that's exactly the traffic pattern that they've been using to bring people in now. Bring the kids in and bring them into that center core campus area and drop them off. And then they circle back out through the other road that is off to the right side of this plan and back out to one thirty five. So there, we, we talked about this a little bit before, I think, but there are several things that the camp does as, as it brings campers into the site. They do use buses and they have buses that come in kind of throughout New England to bring the students to the site, they gather them in, in different places throughout New England and bring them and drop them off. So that in itself reduces the amount of traffic that enters this site, it's the, the buses that come in and drop them off. So on arrival date, the way they, the way they process their arrivals, the campers arrive between noon and four. There are three coach buses that bring kids in. And there are, when you run the numbers based on those, those buses and as well from the amount of traffic and the time that it's spread over, there's about eleven peak hour trips on the arrival. And because it's spread over four hours, that's just the, the peak trips are sort of divided between those four hours. And then for departure, the campers leave between nine and eleven in the morning, and there are about forty one peak hour, peak hour trips, and that's really the same amount of trips, obviously, in and out of picking up campers and taking them away, but it's condensed over the two hour period, so it's a little higher in the morning when they leave. And what camp group is proposing to do is to, with this section of the camp, is to stagger the drop offs and the pickups on different days. So what that will do is some of the campers will come in for, say, the, the existing section of the camp. They come in on, say, a Saturday, and then the other kids will come in on a Sunday, or whichever day of the week it happens to fall for these, for the, the campers, and when the, when it starts and, and when it stops. What that does is it obviously disperses the parking or the, I'm sorry, the traffic over those, over those days, rather than concentrating it into a single day. So for the, for the new section of the camp, they will arrive, also two coach buses will bring these kids in, plus we expect about thirty cars for drop off between noon and four PM, sort of the same drop off hours, which amounts to about eight peak hour trips. And then on the departure of the kids from it, again, on a different day than when the existing camp departs, there would be two coach buses again to take the kids away, and about sixty cars that would come and pick up campers and leave, which gives you about thirty one peak hour trips over that two hour period, so it's actually slightly less on peak hour trips in the, in the proposed condition in the way that this is being, being staggered. So that's a sort of a simplified overview, I guess, of the, the way that this will work. The key to it from our perspective is that if they can stagger these days of pickup and drop off, then they, they spread that traffic over, over few, several days versus, you know, bringing everybody in on the same day. We have submitted to main DOT, we're working through some details with them, they, they will look at the access drives, so we've submitted a plan to them, and we're just going through those details and processing that. So from a traffic standpoint, I think that's where, where we are. Stormwater. There were some comment that, there were some emails, I think, that we got from, that were forwarded to us, and there was some little bit of question about stormwater where we were. Norm did in fact speak with Bill Montego today, and he, we understand he started his review in that he's aware of the fact that there is a, an existing stormwater permit from the department, the main DEP that, that we've already obtained, and he didn't, so far he didn't see any issues, but he will continue his review of the permit, of the application itself, to make sure it's in compliance with the town regulations. And I think it's probably just important to note and remind everybody that, that, that the area that's closest to the, to the lake, then that shoreline zone, and the way that this this was rezoned, requires a higher level of treatment than, and then exists, actually, I'm probably on other places in the lake, throughout the lake. It requires treatment of buildings with a drip strip edge, so treatment of all impervious, well, all buildings will be treated through that. Regardless of, of whether they, whether it's required or not, it is a requirement of that zoning, so it goes a little bit above and beyond, and we, we, we develop that zoning in that sense of trying to protect the the lake and the, and the watershed of the lake. There were some questions about noise and fireworks around, at the site, at the camp. This will not, there will be no more, there'll be increase in firework activities out here because of this camp, it would still be the same firework activity that, that has occurred in the past. And then I think at the, at the site walk, although I wasn't there, Norm passed this on to me, I know there was discussion about the path to the dock and sort of meandering that down the hill, that's not a problem whatsoever, I think it probably was what we intended to do. Anyways, and I think the other important item is to just, the trees and the cabins that we intend to put in there, really the thought has been to sort of nestle those cabins within the trees that are there, as you probably all saw, they're sort of mature trees. And being able to take as few trees as possible is, is really the objective here. And obviously, we have to meet the shoreline zoning requirements of, of basal area and what, what is required to do that, so. Again, I think the, the idea will be, as long as the board's comfortable with this, that those cabins be placed in the general area we've shown, but maybe adjusted slightly just because of, of existing trees, so not having to take those trees down and sort of fit them in, into that, into that forest the best we can. So I think those were the items that we had to talk about, happy to talk about it.
It might be useful, there may be some people listening in tonight who didn't get, say, the overview from the last meeting of, of you know, what areas of the existing camp are gonna be expanded. Sure. And then in the new project, how many new camper cabins and staff cabins, if you could, if one of you could kind of maybe, for the benefit of the audience, kind of.
Sure. You just get to my notes so that I've got the right. So within the I'll say within the, the proposed plan. And within that, what we call the Recreation Lake Protection District, the zoning district there, we have five camper cabins and two small cabins. The camper cabins will be thirty six by fifty feet or smaller. Staff cabins will be twenty feet by thirty feet. And they'll all be constructed on a pier foundation, so they're gonna be sort of elevated a bit and likely to be helical piles that we do that on, so we're not gonna excavate out and put in a, a foundation, but likely to, to use the, these helical piles that will support the building. There will be a campfire area that, as I said, that walking path that I talked about earlier, which will lead down to the, to the down to the dock that's being proposed. And all the development is gonna be more than a hundred feet away from the lake in that, in that zone, so. Just westerly of the Recreation Business Lake District. There will be camper cabins and three staff cabins. An access drive is, it goes through that space as well, and there is an activity business and a ropes course, so that's, I'll say just outside of the that Lake Protection District. And then there's that wetland that passes through sort of the center of the site. And then beyond that, or west of that, as, as we move away from the lake, there will be additional staff cabins, activity administration buildings. There are access drives, site amenities that include tennis courts and basketball courts. There is an access drive that will cross the wetland, so that is intended to allow for a circular motion, allow for emergency vehicles to come in and out and get down to the cabins that are, that are closer to, to the lake. Important to note that the access drive is, is, is outside of that outside of that zone, it's, it's set back outside of that the shoreline zone area. There's also an elevated boardwalk that will cross the wetland, and that's just, just what it, what it is, it's a boardwalk intended not to impact the wetland to the extent of, except for the extent of putting in some piles to, to support it. And all of those wetland crossings have been approved by the, by the Department of Environmental Protection already, so we've already permitted those. So on the, I'll say on the existing site, if you will, or the, the existing camp. There will be a new office building and an expansion to the dining hall. There are some drives for circulation that will be added in that space of the area of the dining hall, kind of where the properties come together. There's some access drives that will be added there. So I think if that, I guess as far as utilities, I can hit that real quick, we do have electrical services, which will be underground, there'll be some, some lighting that will be used to sort of light the pathways, but dark sky compliant type lighting, very minimal, more safety lighting than anything else, some around, obviously, around the cabins for safety for the kids and campers that are there. Septic systems will be used on the site to deal with septic from the, from the units, they're sort of spread throughout the site in different places. But we have kept those all outside of the shoreline zone so that, to protect the water quality as well. So hopefully that covers everything, Chair, if you have any other questions, we're happy to talk to them.
Any board members have any questions at this point?
I don't have questions. But as far as the entrance, gate one. My concern is not so much traffic, but safety concerns at that gate. So something, you know, probably the, the answer is to get DOT to come up and take a look at it. That entrance is a little too close to the crest of the hill, and twenty five is a posted speed limit. If you sit there, you're gonna see some vehicles that are doing a heck of a lot more than forty five.
Which is an existing, it's an existing access point, so I don't know how much review at this point we're able to take on that, make suggestions certainly.
That's why DOT, you know, it's, they could be requested to take a look, possibly make some suggestions. signage prior to the exit. Okay, hidden drive, you can put Camp Kipewa on it, whatever, I don't care. People, there's some people that are running that road, they're not that familiar. Forty five is too slow for and they're not aware, you know, you get seven driveways right after the crest of that hill. As a matter of fact, I think one of the letters we've got addresses, you know, brings that up as well. But that's my concern, okay, is there's a safety issue there at that entrance.
Anybody else on the board have a?
They, they keep referring to busing some of the, the proposed campers. Is there going to be a drop off point in Manchester, Augusta, or something like that, because at, at some point in time, you know, you may have done the, the traffic study as of now or whatever, but we have a large influx of summer people in the area that use that one thirty five. that one thirty-five, Maycomber Road and, and all the roads in that adjacent area.
Um, so if, if there is a problem with, with traffic congestion, do you guys have an alternate plan?
Um, we don't feel there's a problem with traffic congestion, but I'm going to let Steve and Ginger maybe weigh in on that. If you do have any local, um, places with which you, um, pick up.
Um, no, I mean, we never have, like you said, I guess we haven't even thought, but, but you know, of that as an, as an issue, but we don't do pickups in those areas. Most of our campers are not coming from the real local areas.
So there's, there's no plan to pick up campers that are not coming from the local areas, I really understand?
No, we do, but we pick up like in Portland, in Boston, in Connecticut, in New York, and we bring them to camp. We don't have, um, campers from Augusta, you know, like, I, I mean, I have a few campers from Winthrop, but really I think I have three. So that's about it.
Ginger, what size buses are going in and out of there? You'd think I know, living across the street.
I know, they're coach buses, but, um, yeah, like fifty-five passenger, I think is what they usually are.
Okay.
Also, in the, in the application, it said that, uh, Kipwar Real Estate Company LLC contemplates additional development on its properties that may impact stormwater, et cetera, and that. Does, do we interpret that as an expand, an additional expansion to the facilities that are there?
No, there's, there's nothing planned at this time for additional expansion.
Well, I, I realize there's nothing planned at this time, but it says they contemplate it in the future. So at some point in the time, are we going to be presented with an additional, uh, proposal to expand the facility? Or is it going to be limited to what is in this proposal?
Uh, I, I don't mind speaking to that. Um, we don't plan any expansion of the current Kipwar property, but we're constantly trying to make it better. So, you know, may, maybe a few years down the road where we want to, you know, knock down the wood shop and, and put up a new one, you know, things like that, but there's no plans for any expansion of the program. And, and that, you know, that way, like, we've, we've built some things over the last few years. I've put a porch on a, on a program building and things like that, so, um, maybe that's what that wording was, you know, the ability to keep maintaining and, and improving, but, but no, not expanding.
Anyone here in the room have any questions or comments? What about on, uh, our, our Zoom? Audience, anyone have any questions or comments at this point? All right, I just wanted to kind of take a look at what we've got and what might be you know, lacking, as we mentioned, I also, I also spoke to, um,
You have a hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, we can't see it, so it's better to, to speak, and please identify yourself for the record.
Charlie, unmute yourself.
Again, if, you know, you can identify yourself so we have it for our record.
Yeah, uh, Charlie Jacobs, uh, I sent a letter, my wife and I, Rebecca Stanley, sent a letter today, um, outlining our concerns, and I just wanted to, uh, follow up on the traffic discussion. I think it would be useful to get input from Monmouth Police, uh, with regard to traffic there. Maybe you do that as a regular matter anyway, I don't know. Uh, but they patrol that area and I think would have a good sense of, uh, what the issues are. Uh, I know, I live on Maycomber Road and I know there are, uh, there have been five or six significant accidents on, just on Maycomber Road since we moved there eleven years ago, so. And there's a lot of traffic, obviously, on one thirty-five also, so. Uh, I know the camp has taken steps to address the, the, uh, traffic issue, but I think there may be other things that could be done that would be fairly simple, uh, but effective. Uh, so I would urge the board to, uh, consider those things and consult with the local constabulary, uh, and perhaps also on the noise issue, so there would be some basis for knowing, you know, how many complaints there have been with regard to noise. And I know they all don't go to the police department, but I think some do, uh, and that might be useful information, uh, to have at the next meeting.
And I, I don't know if you heard at the outset, we, we typically, any major development notices go to, um, different departments, public works, and police and fire. And those notices may not have gotten to them yet, we're working through some administrative changes in the office, so we're going to kind of be discussing that, I think, in a couple minutes, but.
Um, but their, their input will be sought.
Yes, yes.
As far as noise goes, we've got a noise ordinance.
Well, we don't have a noise ordinance, I mean, we have in the, any project that gets approved has to meet the standards of noise in the ordinance. And there is a, a standard on that in terms of, usually according to time of day.
Yep.
So fireworks are excessively loud.
Yeah, and that's kind of problematic because, you know, fireworks are allowed in town. You know, I mean, the week of Fourth of July, if you step outside your house, you're going to hear fireworks probably till almost to midnight over various areas of town. Um, I don't know that there's any enforcement, we can.
That there.
And fireworks are governed by the ordinance, correct, Steve?
Um, that's a good question. I think there's a separate fireworks ordinance. Um, we'd have to kind of look at that, but it's, uh, again, some of this is existing.
Sure.
Ongoing, and, you know, the question is, what, what is this project going to add to that?
I was going to offer my relatively unsolicited two cents and point out that the existing fireworks ordinance could be enforced.
Yeah.
But I don't know that it has any bearing on this site plan review. Is that fair?
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have a question, comment? Was it Carol Branning I saw at one point?
I think perhaps Carol was pointing out that.
Okay. All right, I just want to look again at kind of our, our checklist and as, as we talked about, um, we do seek the input from departments, and I think we'll, we'll make sure that, that those notices get, um, to them. Do we have a new police chief, do I understand?
Interim.
An interim.
For another month.
Um, so I think what's happened in the past is maybe, you know, we've put copies, sent copies of applications, so put them in there, in their pickups, we'll have to maybe see if that's really an effective way.
Sure.
Of them, I know, like on the, uh, the solar ordinance, we really had to chase down the comments, um, because, um, I don't know whether they got to them or they thought they needed to do something, so I think between now and the next meeting, we can.
Yeah, as an action item, I'll take it on to reach out to the,
Yeah.
um, listed department and coordinate the best way to provide this.
I think we said at the outset, I don't think the school department needs to be notified on this type of development because it's not something that impacts the school.
Yeah. Another concern I've got, I'd like to hear from John Dubinsky on it, as to first responders. How his people would deal with the expansion here. But, uh, my feeling, we should include him along with Fire Chief, Police Chief. That is, that's up to him.
Yeah, John can certainly weigh in, I mean, the, the ordinance doesn't include him, but that's probably, I think the, the thought was that that the fire issues would, would kind of cover.
Could you get a fire truck?
If you're going to try, I mean, that's been used, the usual issue, can, can a fire truck get in there? Is there available water for suppression?
The other thing with that, you know, e- expanding is, if something happens, ambulance has to get down there ASAP, it's going to get down there, but they've got to be able to know where they're going down there. They go into the dining room, they go into a camp, are they going to, but a horse spine or whatever, uh, does John's people know, you know, how to, they sort this out, so they don't roam around or lose time.
Our, our, you know, our interaction with Kipwar has been outstanding, Ray. Um, they usually meet us right on the main road and guide us in, uh, to where we need to be. Uh, just the same as is done in the other ten camps that, that, uh, that we cover. Um, as a matter of fact, if you want to rank them, Kipwar is probably among the smaller of the camps, um, that we cover. Um, but, uh, we've had, we've had no instances where we've had any issues either gaining access or determining where the patients are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so I think by the next meeting, hopefully we'll have, um, the input from Coventry Watershed. Um, we do now, just looking at kind of our checklist on page two, we have, I think, adequate mapping. Um, I don't think there's a requirement for specific soils information outside of what's been provided to Main DEP. Existing septic, I think it's going to be used, is there any planned expansion of any of the septic areas? Septic fields or?
Um, I think they're all new that we're proposing on the site, they're, they're all exist, new, new systems that will go in with the camp.
Okay, and are, do we have some site evaluation on those?
Plans.
Plans are in there, good, okay, good, I just want to make sure. Um,
I tried to appear, I was like.
And I think we discussed water. There may be in the future wells, but at this point, water is coming from, from the lake as far as.
That's correct.
For what?
Water.
Water.
For what?
For the camp.
Drinking water?
Yes.
What about the central well with, uh? There's a central well, isn't there, that they distribute, surface distribute?
Well, yeah, how, there's a storage area for the water.
Yeah, Steve, can you weigh in on this? You know that system better than I do.
Sure, it's a surface water system licensed with the state, and, uh, basically we pump lake water, uh, uh, out of the lake, treat it with, uh, chlorinate it and pump it through filters, and then it goes to a holding tank at the highest point of the property, and then it gravity feeds down, and so, um, at this point, we'll maybe, I would say maybe we'll double our storage, but the, the basic system won't, won't change.
We have a small well that just feeds us.
Yeah, we, we've not drilled wells in the thirteen years we've been there, we inherited three cat wells, which is my understanding, they just didn't flow enough to, um, for us to, you know, operate camp on, so we're still on the surface water system.
Okay, so we've got soil erosion, sedimentation control plan, phosphorus, stormwater. Receive information on traffic and seek additional input. Um, we have the main DEP. Any idea when you might get some response from Main DOT? Do you think you might have something by the December meeting?
Uh, we may, um, it depends on how quickly they get out there to, to look at it, uh, we'll, we'll shoot for it and do what we can to get it there.
Okay, so as I said, the plan would be at our next meeting, which is the first, second Thursday in December. Um, nine, that will, we're going to publish notice for a public hearing. And, uh, we'll come back for further review of this project at that time. And so, if, nothing further on this, we'll.
I've got, I want to know, have they been notified on the pre and post instruction pictures, photographs?
Yeah, anything in shoreline zoning now, I think with the, I don't know whether this was an amendment a couple of years ago to the shoreline zoning, uh, there should be some photographs of the area where you're going to do any development in the shoreline area, so I know you've got the, the cottage areas marked out, but if someone could take some photos, um, because we're supposed to have those. And then, once this project is complete, we'd have a set of photos to show how that area has been changed and is it consistent with the approval.
Okay.
And that's like, I, I, it's not in, it's, that's a, that's in the state shoreline zoning statute and hasn't made its way into our ordinance, but it's, I think, part of the state law.
Steve, uh, I spoke with, um, Dawn Hurd about that, and she said that we have to inform the applicant, even though the language is not in our current ordinance, because it is state statute, right, but we have to inform them.
Yeah, I don't, that's not a problem at all, we can certainly do that.
Thanks for bringing that up, Ray. Okay, so we'll close this discussion if.
I've got one question before I close it. Under attachment two, on local, a local planning, it says that it meets criteria for the two thousand and nine comprehensive development ordinance. Now, is that a typo or is there a reason for that statement?
I think comprehen, I probably, it is a typo and probably means two thousand and nine comprehensive plan. Because the ordinance is got a different date.
Yeah, I think it was comprehensive plan, you're correct, Chair.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it July fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Right. Okay, and if you could note that in the, the minutes, please, Matt, that, that will accept that amendment to their application. All in favor of that, accepting that amendment?
Yeah.
Very good. Thanks for all participating.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, the other item that we had kind of a late addition, um, Matt had, um, Brennan?
That is me.
Um,
Somebody stand on the X.
You can sit there if you're comfortable there, wherever you're comfortable. So Matt had indicated to me that, um, who's in file this uh, application wants. application wants to do some work on a camp and we thought unfortunately it didn't get in in time to be.
I will say, sorry, just to clarify, it hasn't been filed yet. You haven't, I think you took it with you.
I think I gave you a copy.
Okay, and so you have copies here.
Yeah.
So this, but this will be a pre-application.
Pre-application.
For purposes of discussion, what your plans are and figuring out how to move forward.
Right, okay. So let's see, tell us where the property is.
Let's off 135, interesting. It's, it's on Larry Drive. It's almost to the end of the point on Jug Stream.
Okay.
The camp is on the left, the road, piece of property. If you go in the water, on the water, you just go around the point and then you're in Anavasapook. So I bought it last summer. It's a was extremely rough shape. But I, I, you know, I knew that going in, I knew that the first thing that had to happen was to have the foundation repaired. So I got a couple estimates and went with mushroom, but so it needs to be jacked up. Some of the sill has already been repaired, but I mean, the whole underside has to be fixed. And then, you know, on the back of mushroom rows or the front of his proposal here that I accepted, I don't know if I gave you the copy of the one that I accepted that he's got his signature on. For me who knows nothing, he looked pretty exact to me what he's going to do. He's gonna jack it up. He has got a fix underneath. Isn't on this quote and you know, dig and bring it up to grade and pour slab and put it back down cement blocks.
And how far do you think it is the closest point of this building to the stream? What would you?
I, you know, I don't, I honestly don't know. I, I don't know. And, and any of the maps that I have or anything, it isn't, I can't really tell. I had a, you know, a site inspector come, do you know, are you, are you Ernie?
No.
You're not Ernie? Could you be Ernie tonight? Ernie's been out.
Ernie Sylvester.
The, yeah, the plumbing guy. And he has a septic design in the works. I don't know what's gonna happen with the septic, but, but I had Von Smith made a design to put, you know, a septic system on the existing property. It, it, it has to be more than point one acre. The realtor doesn't, didn't even know.
Yeah, so.
I don't see anything besides point one acre on here.
So, couple of things, you know, one, of course, we, we always like to see a copy of the deed. And, and, you know, but when we formally, you don't have, need to show us tonight. And we've got to have a we've got to have a sketch sort of to scale. Showing us the lot and where the building is located on that lot and how far it is from the shore. So somebody has to, to measure.
Yep.
And what, what happens when you do this type of work? This, you're not proposing to expand it, it's just to
No.
Just to lift it up, put it back down.
Yeah, it is to fix what's there. And, and then if I want to expand it, I'll cross that bridge later, but I have the printed off of the town. I mean, I have a, the septic has a, has a scat tunnel, just good enough for you. Want something from, who do you want to create the sketch?
Well, that's always sort of an issue. If you could make something that is
To scale.
To scale, you know, like in so many feet to an inch and it's, I mean, it's obviously best to have a from our standpoint, kind of an engineered sketch, but we realize it's, there's an expense to that. So you have probably what's called a grandfathered lot and a grandfathered building on it, non-conforming lot in a non-conforming structure. And so then under shoreline zoning, we have to look to see, well, what, what are you able to do? And so what, what our shoreline zoning ordinance says is you know, if someone were coming in and building a new building, they have to be at least a hundred feet back.
Yeah.
And if, if you're not in your grandfathered and all you're doing is putting a foundation under, the ordinance requires that the foundation be placed such that the setback requirement is met to the greatest practical extent.
Right.
So that's sometimes, usually what that means is we've got to go out and look at the site.
Yeah.
And see whether you're able to go back a foot, two feet, five feet, 10 feet, whatever. Again, it's, it's looking sort of at the topography and you know, what that site looks like.
That, that building is probably 75 feet from the water edge on the opposite side of the road.
This is what the site evaluator did. So this property is 50, from there to the road is 70. And that's about all I can make out of this. Does that look great?
Yeah.
And the, the camp itself, and it's a, is kind of, it's close to the.
Very clearly in the shoreline zoning.
Yeah.
For resource protection, not residential, which is why it's, so I'm here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can't, you know, really.
Really isn't any way for them to move that structure.
Yeah.
Oh, he's got plus or minus 130 feet. I'll let you see.
Yeah, great.
So there's a stream, this is the property on the water, so it's 50 by 70. And there's dirt road. And then I see 130 feet right there.
So that's on the backside of the house.
I don't know.
That's the back where the septic.
Yeah, and so, so the front is probably, yeah, and it's a resource protection.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, so, you know, you could probably take something like this and, and make it into a, a sketch of a
One inch is 40 feet. Yeah.
Yeah, so that gives us.
Probably do that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Vaughn is pretty accurate too, he's.
Checking the closing documents.
I have a
Did you take a mortgage out when you bought it?
No, I paid cash.
Sometimes if you take a mortgage, they do a mortgage loan inspection.
Right, I, I did have, I do have the inspection of a person before me that had it, it was pending that, that made an offer. This is the closing stuff, I don't see it.
No, you probably wouldn't have one unless it was a mortgage.
Oh, because I would have had it. Well, maybe the, maybe the inspection that I have, wait, would the inspector do it?
No.
No.
Would have to be surveyed?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we can we can so what you need to do, of course, if you would, this would be formally submitted, say with a copy of your deed and a sketch.
Copy of the deed and a sketch, and you don't care who does the sketch?
I don't think we're gonna need it really. I think, I think a sketch that you prepare based, you know, as, as long as you can kind of get it on a piece of paper that's large enough for us to understand it and.
You know, Vaughn, the guy that did the site evaluation, might be able to do it. Certainly didn't have management.
And then we need sort of a, maybe a photograph of the front of the cottage and the, and the land and down to the stream, a couple of.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of. Do you want to put this? I made an extra copy of this. This is, came off the, the I didn't pass that down. That's what it looks like. And it's too long, which the realtor would so this, this goes with it because it's somehow too long. But I have plenty of pictures.
You think there's any possible issue with road setback?
No.
No, okay. It's not, on that, on that road is, is some of them that are on the road.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we use, we use our judgment. Goies back further than most.
It's, it is. I, it's a nice lot, that's why I like it. It's, it's next to Carl.
I, I did, I did a DEP project next door, that's why I know the proper.
Yeah. And Fred lives next door, you know.
Good old Fred.
Fred, I worry about Fred. His wife got something.
Yeah, so I think the filing fee is $50. So we'd have a filing fee of $50.
I have my checkbook, did I have given it to you tonight?
No, you don't have to, you know, we're, we're not meeting again till December. And so if you get these additional materials into Matt, you know, a check for the filing fee and we'll and maybe a copy of your deed and the sketch.
As well as the, as well as the photos?
As well as the photos.
Will, will the document that was just passed right away?
I don't know, is that, that's a tax.
That's a tax, I don't know, that shows a picture of the building.
Yeah.
And probably got some measurements there of the building, that's it.
This is, this is what we got at, what I got at closing. Can you tell them by myself? I was married, but my husband died three years ago. I'm buying a camp for our grandchildren.
Yeah, well, that's nice.
This is, yes, you have a copy of the warrant you need here, which would be great to attach with it.
I guess I should have started.
But I don't immediately look, see anything else.
I guess I bought it July 28.
So just a copy of the.
Is that one page?
Yeah.
Thank you. But I.
You can have that.
Okay.
That's part of the tax, town tax records.
So what else would you like to know?
Well, yeah, I mean, as I say, this is sort of pre-application, we're just sort of telling you what, what you need to do. And then you come back the next meeting. We have to decide whether we need to do a site visit or whether based on the information we have we can do anything, but we, we really can't. We have to formally accept the application. We have to determine whether we're gonna have a site visit. And we have to see that the abutters are notified, that they get, either they sign some kind of waiver of notice or we have to send them a registered letter. Which means that we can't review this any earlier than the January meeting.
Okay.
But probably this work, given that we're in November, maybe not until the spring.
No, he, he, he's, I'm on the calendar for January. Yeah, that's not your problem. But I, so the plan was to, he, they come out and they put cloths down so that the ground doesn't freeze. And then they, they do it all in January.
No.
That's, but I mean, maybe he can do it in February too.
Well, I mean, we meet, we meet at the beginning of the month. Second Thursday of the month, so that might be, I don't know how the calendar falls in January. But the only.
The, should be the 13th.
Yeah.
January 13.
January 13. I mean, he can go ahead and put things down as long as you don't do any work. But if he wants to cover an area.
Yeah, yeah, I think he was gonna do it before that. He hasn't come yet and I haven't contacted him to see what his schedule is.
I mean, from, I mean, Mike has some familiarity with this project. If, if you were planning to expand it, it would be a bigger deal.
Yeah, I know.
But if it's just kind of lift up, put a foundation, it's not, not as complicated. It sounds like you're on the other side of the road from the stream, you're not, you know, we just have to make sure you don't get any closer.
Oh, yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, when you said what was gonna be done underneath, you're referring to what? When you say underneath?
It, it, it probably, well, it, it probably needs some sill repair and there might need to be some joists replaced. It's, it's, it's in rough shape on the bottom. But the, the plan is to fix that and spray foam the bottom. It doesn't really need anything inside. It's, it's all, it's really the bottom of it.
They're gonna, they're gonna pour slab and they're gonna set it down on blocks and repair the cells before they do that and set it on the blocks on a concrete slab. So I'm sure they've got to put gravel underneath it. Before they pour the concrete, so they've got a suitable base.
Physically a slab will launch wall.
It's a, it's a good company, it's mushroom jacking and moving. And I also got a quote from Jewett Builders and just stop there. But, but yeah. That, this is the first thing that's gonna be done and then do something with the septic, maybe. It works, but it's got a thousand gallon holding tank.
Doesn't look like this is gonna need a DEP permit by rule, although it says this on the proposal.
Is that something, do I have to get the DEP permit?
Well, if you, if you were doing something closer to the shore within 25 feet.
More than 25 feet.
Is it 100 feet is shoreline?
Yeah, yeah, so that's what the town is looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you get that additional information, get it into Matt, we'll, we'll put you on the agenda for our December meeting.
Okay, and so what's the date of the December meeting?
The ninth.
Ninth.
And so I'll follow up with you in a few minutes here with this email. I took notes of all the items that Steve just listed off, so.
Yeah.
If you didn't catch them all, we'll catch up and get that application completed and go get it out.
Okay, so I, so I want to get those back to you as soon as possible, but you probably won't look at it for the meeting, right?
I'll look at it in advance to make sure.
We'd, we'd look at it and sit down there, get a lot of this habit.
I heard you say Jimmy Hopkins, he's gonna, he's gonna look at the septic design and Ernie has it doing something with it.
Needs a variance to see resource protection.
Right, great. Beautiful thing. But I don't know Carl, I don't know my neighbor's addresses really, except for Fred, no Fred.
Well, you've got here Fred.
I did, oh, I called Carl and got his.
You got his address.
I did have to call and get their addresses, yeah.
So one of the things you could do is you could give them each a copy of this. Have them sign a statement that they've got your application. And they don't require any formal notice from the planning board. And they don't require any formal notice from the planning board. That might allow us. That might speed it up.
I think it's got Piper Owens property behind it.
A guy does.
Yeah, I don't know if I should bring that up now or not. Carl and, you know, I'm looking at the septic design and knowing that the, the current holding tank isn't a hundred feet from Fred's well. So, um, I had, you know, the evaluator came in and Ernie came and looked at it and he drew up a design that he thinks is better than the holding tank. But it's possible to buy land in the back from Don Piper. But Carl and I and Kiltika have talked about it, but we don't know if it's wetland. You know, if it's junk land.
It's wet.
Or how much you have to buy. Do you know? I mean, see, I could get an easement. I mean, when I get to the septic system, that'll be another decision. Right?
And, and you can deal with Ernie on that. I mean, that's not so much our concern at this point.
So you're saying the land's not, you get back there?
It, it would give you more acreage in order to do what you need to do. But I mean, the water runs right behind Carl's and then runs between your lot and Carl's.
Right.
And that whole back area is wet, although I didn't, yeah, it's, it's wet.
Right. And, uh, yeah.
He tried to put an addition on the back of the building.
Same here.
And he dug a hole and-
Yes.
Let it fill with water and it was nothing but mud.
Do you think that he's been gone for two years with that hole there?
I filled the hole in some because it was dangerous.
We did too.
It was deeper than that.
Oh. It was, yeah. He put a, it's, it's quite amusing the things that we run across, you know, like the fifty gallon oil drum with kerosene in it. You took the tank out. But anyway, I won't, I'll let you get back.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Is that on the, uh, Matt, on the screen there, we have Chief's iPhone?
That's John.
Oh, that's John. That's the other chief. That's the power chief. Okay. All right.
He's been there forever.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's right.
Being very quiet.
He fell asleep.
Yeah. So we just got to make sure we're getting notices to the right.
Yeah. Yeah. Definitely a miscommunication there, both between the stage of this process we were in and also sort of who that was going to fall to.
Yeah.
Make sure it gets out to both of them and everybody on that list and with the exception of the school district and solicit and or chase down their responses.
Yeah. And I can draft maybe what we'll put. I guess the question is, we put an ad, maybe run it twice in the Winthrop advertiser for a public hearing? Or do we go with the KJ?
Come on, a beach.
It's gonna be expensive. Those ads are not cheap when you go, when you go into either the Sun or the Kennebec Journal, those ads are quite expensive.
Yeah.
But, um, of course you get a wider circulation. Well, I don't know if you get a wider circulation.
I don't know that you do.
You know, now I don't, I don't know how many people get the newspaper. The advertiser you get in your mailbox.
Yeah, we do the advertiser.
Yeah, as far as Sun Journal or KJ.
People use their phones.
Mom, it's used to be. I don't know about today. It's pretty much split, yeah.
Yeah.
Readership was Loson Sun and the other half was KJ.
So I think maybe putting something in the advertise, it just makes-
People, the people are, people are concerned.
I, I think we'll look maybe at the, how we could look right now at any publication requirement that either ordinance might state. That somewhat handicaps us. Unless, unless we do some type of waiver, if that's something we can waive. See if there's anything addresses that. I don't think shoreline zoning has anything on that.
I don't believe it does. So, um, if the board decides to hold a public hearing, it shall hold the hearing within forty days of its termination of the complete application. So, I shouldn't have read that one out loud.
Yeah.
The town shall publish the notice, notice of the date, time, and place of the hearing at least two times.
Yeah.
Answers that. In a newspaper of general circulation within month, the date of the first publication shall be at least seven days prior to the hearing.
Okay. So we've got plenty of time.
We do. So twice advertiser.
Yeah.
That covers us for the advertiser.
Shall, shall it be ten and seven days or fourteen and seven days in advance of-
Yeah, I don't know how, you know, I don't know what their submission date is.
I do. I think it's by ten AM on Wednesday so that it goes out on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Is that correct? It comes to Saturdays probably.
Yeah. 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 So and, and the only problem is we're in a little condensed period of time.
That is only three weeks.
Yeah. So, so I think if we, if we-
I was afraid it was two, but it's three.
If we get it to them fairly quickly, I'll try to, I think we can take a lot of what we put in the notice to the abutters. And I could, I'll try to adapt that tomorrow.
If you can get me that by the first of the week.
Yeah, by month, you have a-
Because Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving is the deadline for the following Saturday, which will be two weeks out.
Yeah.
And then we'll do it again the subsequent week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right. Anything in public comment? I don't think so. We already had it. Anything else? I guess, I don't know if any of the other of you heard. Dave Shaw said to Ray and I that he happened to go to the select board meeting. They're making rules and regulations for the boards. And I don't know, there's a draft going around and I guess, Dave said he made a suggestion that submissions, not submissions, but materials to the members go electronically. And I think they may change that, that that be the preferred method. I know some of you like to get paper. And it's hard. It's hard to get electronic of like that. I haven't heard anything about it. That's the first I, I heard. Yeah. I thought they were going to make some rules to guide them in appointing people to committees. So I thought, I would think common courtesy would say, what do you folks think of this? I'll try to find out.
Two years ago?
And we, we should have some input into that process myself, but well, we're the ones who have to deal with it. I, I think as, as we've discussed, we get a lot more kind of detailed information than a lot of other boards get. And if it's plans and things, you know, they require. I mean, I think you did a good job doing that map on the,
Thanks.
On the, uh, sketch we got with the traffic plan, so.
Okay. So you're going to talk to certain selectmen because if you don't, I will.
Well, you could, you're free to do that. I mean, I, I'm gonna just ask Linda. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna ask her first. Say if there's some rules and regulations from the board, I, I'd really like to kind of see them and have an opportunity to comment. But, and if she says none of your business, yeah, then I'll-
I may have misunderstood, but the way Dave told me, it was already decided. And it was decided to be strictly electronic, but he got them to add in preferred electronic, which gives us a minor option.
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood his whispering.
Well, I, I have, you know, occasionally I look at what the select board's agenda is if I happen to be on the website just to see what they're doing, but.
Yeah, I was too busy to even look at these. Otherwise I would have been there. Somebody would not have been happy.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we can adjourn for the night.
I've got something.
Okay.
Is there a reason why we no longer have a budget? Other than the fact that Dave Shaw used to do it for us, whatever, and we don't really need it or?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we used to do on, we never or we never reached what the budget was. You know, we, we had these categories like education, copying, uh, and publications and things. And, and when, when there was a regular town meeting or even after, there was concern that individual budgets, and I think it kind of grew out of the controversy over having a police department. That the decision was made that the planning board budget would just be part of the town office budget. And I guess, I mean, I don't s- and, and so what they did is, I think at different times, part of code enforcement and part of a secretary was in our budget. And they would move stuff freely anyway. So it just, you know, they just said to me, we don't, you don't need to do this anymore. We're just, we're just gonna run this administratively. If you need something, just let us know. Submit what you, what you need. So I don't know that we need a budget. I don't know. But I don't, I don't think we've had one for, and we could have asked Dave while he was here, but I bet it's eight years.
Now, maybe with this new town manager, it won't be such an issue. We need something out of the general.
You know, as I say periodically, I like to, I guess I didn't bring that book. You know, we have that. I don't know if they're still making those.
Planning books.
Uh, well, the one that has the statues. Yeah. I'll try to look and see if there's a new, a new version that's out, that we could all get. And, you know, but that's typically been in or somebody wanted to attend, um, you know, an MMA program.
Right.
It's always been useful, I think, for a new member to attend one of those. And I know I saw MMA is doing something on the freedom of information requirements. So there are those things, but I mean, we just don't have much that we you know, need a budget for. It's not like the public works department.
No, I mean-
Department.
I guess I, hopefully after the first year, then it, it'll be a non-issue. I've always had a problem with being penny wise and pound foolish.
So then, okay, my favor.
That's all. I was able to. What is it? My cord?